All right, this is Andy McNeil and I'm here today with Crystal Malloy, who's a candidate for the Arkansas House District 52. Crystal, how are you doing?
I'm good. I'm good.
Good.
Monday morning. This is maybe my third cup of coffee.
Well, I totally get that. I'm sort of a tea person and so although I haven't grabbed a glass of tea just yet, mainly because I overslept this morning. And so, well, the other day I happened to be over in Russellville and I was in the building where your offices are and which was my first time in that building. So tell me a little about what you did.
Okay, so besides running for state representative.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know.
Yeah, I have a wedding venue. So I was a wedding photographer for 10 years and ended up spending a little bit of time overseas and just was really inspired to on my own small intimate wedding venue. And talked to my husband, who's a carpenter into building it for me. And so we have a little wedding chapel. And I built it in the middle of nowhere in Yount County, Arkansas. It's on a dirt road. I always tell people that's where the best views are, though. You gotta go down a dirt road.
Of course.
And so then I had to say, okay, how am I going to get people here? I had this vision to build something small and intimate. It's a white stucco chapel. I didn't know of anything around us like it. So I started into social media and just tried to be honest and truthful and genuine and built a pretty big following online. And most of my brides, 80% of my brides come to me from social media.
Oh, really?
They're not local. They don't live here. Over 80% don't live here. They come from all over. In August, our couple came from Auburn, Alabama.
Excellent.
You know, we have a lot of Oklahoma brides that come over. Because if they just see, like you talked about going up to Nevo, all I have to do is show people how beautiful it is here.
Right.
You know, that couple in August that came from Auburn, their parents came from Waco, Texas, like the bride's parents did. They all came though, and they all stayed all over Nevo. Rented different cabins and Airbnbs and it was 68 of them.
Excellent.
And so I just think it's the best experience ever. People absolutely love it. And so they get to stay and have almost like a little family reunion and then come down the mountain, get married. And we do everything for them. They just show up.
Okay, so taking wedding pictures, I'm curious, what is your favorite part of the wedding to take a picture of?
To take a picture of? Hmm, that's a good one. I love the moment right before they go down the aisle. Like when maybe that last minute with their daddy or their parent, you know? I have that in my own wedding album, that moment where my dad and I are in the back of the church looking at each other. And we just both started crying, you know? And I do love that moment a lot, but there's a lot. I love all, I love weddings, so.
Actually, it's funny you say it because we just got all of my daughter's wedding pictures. So she got married. She got married in Colorado and it was sort of a destination wedding. But the pictures, I mean, there's of course lots of great pictures, you know, but, but just because it maybe it was more meaningful to me. You know, the 30 minutes before she got married and all the little nerves and like, you know, the emotions. So and then the photographer, of course, is smart enough to be there to capture some of that, you know? And so anyway, I thought that was pretty good. Where did you grow up?
I was born in the Panhandle, Florida. So I was actually, I was born in Pensacola. And my mom's family lives on one side of the state line in Florida and my dad's on the other side in Alabama. But they're about eight miles, about eight miles apart. So the Florabama line is where I grew up.
Got it.
My dad was offered a job in Russellville when I was in fourth grade. And he fell in love with the mountains and fell in love with Arkansas. And so we moved here when I was in fourth grade, went to Scola Elementary.
There you go.
And, and went to school all through and graduated from Russellville. My husband did as well, although we were not friends in school. Our friends, our friends weren't even friends in school. But we later ended up together, but both graduated from Russellville. I attended Arkansas Tech.
Yeah.
For, for a number of years.
Yeah.
And then we.
Now, does that mean you're like on the five-year program or something?
Oh, yeah. I'm like, I, here's my problem in, in school is I looked at the course calendar and said, the course schedule. And I said, that class looks fun. That class looks awesome. And so I ended up with a few minors. But no degree. So I, I have a minor in history, a minor in music theater, a minor in creative writing. And I, I had enough hours. I was a Parks and Rec major though, actually.
Oh, excellent.
I love to learn. That's my problem is I love to learn. And I was a few hours away from finishing. I think I need like 14 hours for my degree. Every once in a while I talk to my old advisor and think, yeah, I'll just go back and finish.
Just knock it all out. You know, it's, I don't know if you would agree with this, but when I think back about my college experience, at the time I felt really busy, right? Of course, now I look back on it and think like, oh, I could have, I could have tripled up on what I was doing, right? You know, like, and if I could go back and redo it again, I would add a lot, I would add a lot to it. Because I majored in accounting, which had like a full, you know, back then, you, you took a lot more classes because you could sit for the CPA exam while you're in school. Which I think they just switched that back, but I would have added on a bunch of other things like history or English or something. Just because I also really, really like, like, like learning. So, so you like learning, you're an entrepreneur. What is like, what is your biggest accomplishment?
You know, I saw, you know, I saw this question when you sent a little heads up and, and I had my first reaction. And then I analyzed it and thought, is that really what I'm gonna say? And I'm like, yeah, I am. My first reaction when I read that question is my greatest accomplishment, the thing that I hold most dear to my heart is the fact that all three of my children have decided to follow Jesus and I got to watch my husband baptize them.
There you go.
And like, I can die tomorrow satisfied in that. And to me, and I mean, not to like, say that's, that I did that, the Lord did that. But to me, that's my, the thing that I'm most proud of in my life.
Excellent. Well, you know, when you go down to the State House, you know, really, when we look at what's going on down there, it's really all, it's, there's surely no Democratic Party left in the state, not really. I mean, there is, but not at scale. And so when we get into committees, oftentimes it's, it's Republicans versus Republicans deciding things. And not everybody thinks the same things for sure. Now, from my opinion, from being like, I consider myself a fierce independent. I look at it and go like, a lot of really dumb bills get out of committees because there's no one to stop them. And somebody who's got a lot of charisma can get them through the committee, or if you've got enough sway, you know? So I'm curious, you know, you know, that means that sometimes, you know, maybe you have to stand up for what you believe in, right? You know, and so, I don't know. Can you tell me about a time that, you know, where you've gone against the grain and you've, you know, everybody wants to go right, you're gonna go left?
Yes, I always think, you know, a time when I've gone against the grain, well, I can give you several. One, when I started homeschooling, so my, my oldest daughter, we lived in Louisiana at the time and she was gonna go to kindergarten. She tested into a grade magnet program. We got the teacher that she wanted. And I got her, got her all the cute uniforms and she started going to school. And every day I just felt like the Lord telling me that you're supposed to homeschool. And I thought, that is crazy. I have never been really around homeschooling. It was not something that my family did. My family, like all my extended family, when I started to talk to them about it, they're like, they did not jive with that. You know, that's just not, you take your kids to school, you know? And this was back in 2011 and it wasn't as, even as popular as it is now. But I just felt such a strong conviction about it. And my husband was even a little bit like, I mean, if you really feel committed, you know? He was like, didn't really sway either way. And I was like, I really feel like I'm supposed to do this. And so I went to her teacher and I said, I'm really sorry. I'm like, I really feel like I need to homeschool. And so her teacher goes, no, don't do it. And I, and but I, I did. And just held true to that. And it's been one of the things I'm honestly most grateful for. I've homeschooled all of my kids at certain points and actually got to teach all three of my kids how to read. And I remember, and I remember with my oldest just crying when she learned how to read. Cause I thought, I did that. I taught her how to do that.
Are you still homeschooling your kids now? I have no idea how old your kids are, but I'm just guessing they're still young, you know?
I have an 18-year-old who just graduated high school and she actually at 3:00 AM landed in Johannesburg, South Africa. She's, she's taking a missions gap year. And so she'll be taking a gap year before college or whatever the Lord has for her. And she's serving on the mission field. And then I have an eighth grader who's 14. She goes to public school. Right now. And then I have a nine-year-old who's in fourth grade and she is actually homeschooling. So she's in another room over there doing some schoolwork.
She's hanging out over there. Well, so you got a few more years for your empty nester. You know, a lot of times today, people go down, down to the State House and I can give a lot of examples, but, but, but where they just have an axe to grind. They have their one thing that they think is like super important to them. But like here, like there's been times in Russellville where that's happened, where I look at it and go like, okay, you've got your one thing. But then it's a lot of times in absence of a lot of other things. Cause look, there's a thousand bills that got passed during the last job. There's absolutely no way you know about a thousand different things, right? And, and could be convicted about a thousand different things, right? And so really, really working to collaborate, I think is a super important skill, you know? Especially with people that disagree with you, right? Because, you know, I'm not sure what we would disagree about, but I'm 100% sure we won't agree on everything, right? So like, so if I'm coming to you with business issues and you disagree with me, or, you know, like, how do you collaborate to find solutions?
Mm hmm. I love this because I do think it's one of my superpowers. I'm on city council right now in Dardanelle. And you know, when you look at the city level, most of the things are not even remotely partisan. So it's very easy. It's very easy for me to, you know, look at situations and just focus on solving the problems of what's best for Dardanelle. And, you know, I sit on city council, you know, or then the mayor's on there as well. And we definitely don't always jive, but I think one of the biggest things that you can do to collaborate with people is I think you have to really like people. And, and what I mean by that is I heard a podcaster one time say that they did a study to see who the most popular people were. Like in school, they would go to these different high schools and they would see who's the most popular. And they found that the most popular kids were the kids who liked the most people. And I, I think of myself, I'm like, that really resonated with me. I'm like, I think that way. I like people. And I can usually find something that I can connect with, with that person. Like we've got something somewhere where I can see you as a human, as a person, and I can talk about that subject with you and we can connect. And so I think that first and foremost, the way you collaborate with people is that you look at them as people and you respect them. And you find something to like about them. You cannot go into life thinking, oh, these people are my enemies. You can't go into Little Rock and say, these people are my enemies and this is my team and we're gonna fight it out. You know, because then who loses? The state loses, your district loses, you know? I think you need to find how you can get along with people, how you can like them, but then also being true to your own compass, your own legislative compass, but I think you can do it with grace, you know? And, and at the end of the day, sit down and say, okay, how do we best solve this problem? Like ideally, you know, I'm a small government girl. I'm a limited government girl. I want government to be smaller. I wish it wasn't, didn't have his hand in so many places.
Interesting. Okay.
But we are where we're at, right? So we gotta start with where we're at and you gotta work with what you have to solve the problems of today. And hopefully slowly move towards a better tomorrow.
Sure. So what gets you mad? When was the last time you got mad? What does your husband do that makes you mad? And I'm just teasing. You can just tell me generally what, what, what makes you mad. I'm sure the list of what your husband can do that makes you mad is much longer list, you know?
You know.
And I say that tongue in cheek, you know?
Oh, wow. I drove him nuts, let me tell you. Um, so in, let me just say in government, okay? In government, the thing that makes me really mad, gets my blood boiling, is this idea that there's this elite group of people who are privy to information and they know more than you. And they are the ones that need to be in the know and you don't. I really can't stand when, when government officials or people in power treat the American people like they're idiots. Like they can't make their own decisions. They're not smart enough to decide what's best for their family. I, yeah, that gets me mad really fast. I'm like.
Can you give me an example?
I mean, even with, okay, even with homeschooling, you run into that a lot, you know? There's a lot of people that don't feel like you as a parent should get to decide the best way to school your child.
Yeah. You know what's sort of interesting? What's sort of interesting about that, if we went back in time, let's say to the 1800s, when we actually said, hey, let's, let's educate everybody. You could have said it a couple of different ways. You could have said, parents, you're responsible for educating your parents. As opposed to like giving your dollar to the government and then the government does it. But I do think in a, in a society where, where a society based on science and democracy and technical things, to have a lot of people that don't know science and technology is, is a bad formula down the road for us. And so, and you know, so I, I, like, I actually think there is such a thing as truth and knowledge, you know? So do you think that's a thing?
Yeah. I, this whole, that's your truth. This is my truth. That's baloney. Like, I'm like, no, there is a truth. There is the truth that we can find out.
Well, yeah, cause I think that too, because I look at it and I say, you know, like I use a simple example, like, it, like so often, if, if, and this is where push comes to shoves, I think people really think about knowledge. You need to have brain surgery. I've done brain surgeries for 20 years. And another person's read about it or done it on a Nintendo set. Who do you want the brain surgery from, right?
Oh, for sure.
It's pretty easy. But what happens is we get into a lot of discussions about vaccines, about shots, about an array of other things. Where, where somebody says, oh, I read it on the internet, you know, and I've got a million examples of where they think that happened. I, I think one of the things to lean into what you said, you know, where I, I always worry about the Fourth Amendment. And I don't know if you know, I know I'm gonna put you on the spot, but the Fourth Amendment is the illegal search and seizure. So it's a privacy, it's a privacy. And so I always like dislike the federal government collecting all of our personal information, which happens at scale. So every time I go through the airport, click, you know, and so, and, and that is.
It's why I don't sign up for TSA Pre-Check.
Yeah, it's, it's just gonna get worse over time. And, and look no further than what they did to the poor girls in, in Tehran that took off their headscarves. I don't know if you know this story, but the, the girl that got, took off her headscarf and got beaten by the police. And then they had a huge protest. And they let all the women protest, take their scarves off and they just use facial recognition to track them all down, you know? And then if you're driving down the street there, you know, somebody can like, you'll get, might get a text that says, hey, Crystal, put your headscarf back on, you know, or you're gonna lose your job. And so that sort of thing to me is much scarier than like, you know, somebody posted a nude picture, right? Like that is the teeny thing, the forcing of people. Anyway, I'm sort of on attention. Let me switch gears.
But no, I can, I mean, I'll jump in on that. I, I think when privacy goes away, liberty goes away. You know, we, like you said, unreasonable search and seizure. I mean, we're innocent until proven guilty and you better get a warrant. You know, and have some evidence before you come after me. And so the trade-off of that, like you talk about truth and vaccines and medicine. So I think the trade-off of that is that we can value science and knowledge and all these things, but we need to value freedom more. You know, and so when it comes to, you know, mandating or smarter, you know, all these things, yeah, it might be the right thing. But we value people's freedom and their autonomy greater than that.
So you've got, you got your kids, they're a lot older now. You got your business going. You're on city council. What made you decide to run?
I am geared to be a problem solver. I wanted, I want to hear about the problem and I want to find the best way to fix it. That's my, that's how God wired me. It's how he, you know, programmed me. And so I've been around a little bit, the state government and just kind of watched, you know, from a distance. And then in city council and when our representative said he was retiring, it's been something that I just thought I could do this job and I could do it well. Another thing is, is that there are 135 legislative members. And moms with kids at home, there's less than five. It's probably honestly, maybe less than three now. So of 135 members, you know, five have kids at home, maybe.
Are we saying we're lacking the D-word?
No.
Diversity?
Oh, diversity. I thought you meant Democrats. I was like, wait, what? No, diversity. Well, and here's the deal. I don't think that that, I'm not saying you should vote for me because I'm a woman. That's ridiculous.
I know, you're right. I've just.
That's ridiculous. But, but I, I want to see more voices at the table and more voices in the discussion to talk about things that moms care about too, or to bring legislation forward. And so if I want to see that and I'm not willing to put my name on a ballot and go for it, then I can't complain. I can't complain if there's not representation, if I'm not willing to step up and say, I'll do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually do think a diversity of voices is better. You know, I think that like even in a company, I like a diversity of ideas, a diversity of like how we make money, a diversity of like where we make money. And so that, you know, the, the, just the, I just think ultimately you have a better outcome.
Yeah, we're all gonna see, we're all gonna see it from different angles, you know? And I'm gonna have a perspective. And so giving my perspective, you know, on something is gonna, I think there's gonna be things that another member will know more than me and I will lean into them. And then maybe if there's an issue that comes to like, say maternal health, then they might say, let me ask Crystal about that. She's actually given birth three times, you know? Like, maybe I have something to say.
Yeah, no, I totally get that. Right. Yeah, I feel that way about certain things like, like, well, like I, I've had a child that has an autoimmune disease and to watch them suffer, right? And so like I, like, you know, I'm not the only one that's had that, right? You know, plenty of people have had family members that are sick, but I just think, you know, it's, it's a lived experience, right? You know, and so, all right. So one of the things you said earlier, and I agree with this, is because I live there. You know, I think that the area is beautiful. I think it's, it's a gorgeous place, but I don't think it's problem-free, you know?
Sure.
And so, and, and some of these necessarily aren't problems. They're just, they're just, you could also frame challenges, opportunities. If you were looking to lay out like, who are the people you're representing? How would you frame that up?
Okay, that's a good question. Um, you know, I, I'm chairman of this, this district a lot and grew up here. And I, I think when you asked me that question, I think about my husband. My husband is a carpenter who never even took the ACT. He's like, no, I'm gonna go build houses. I'm gonna work in construction. This district is full of really talented blue collar workers. We are a very rural district. There are some obviously white collar, you know, in, in those kind of positions as well. But overwhelmingly, you're looking at hardworking, middle-class or, or lower blue collar individuals who just want their families to do well. They just want their families to succeed.
Yeah. So I would say, if I were to add to that, I would say, because I would agree with that description. I would also say that, you know, there's probably quite a people that feel that struggle in a lot of different ways. You know, just if we look at who's on Medicaid as an example, it's got a high percentage of, of people on Medicaid. If I threw in people that are over 65 that are on Medicare, you and you put those two numbers together, you'd probably have just under 50% of the people that are, are on a government-sponsored healthcare program. I would probably say that our test scores are, you know, skewed to the lower side of the average. They, you know, there's, crime is okay. There's a few things where we don't look score perfectly in crime.
Probably drugs would be the, drugs would be the biggest concern when it comes to crime.
Let's just go down some of the stuff that I think are sort of issues. And one more tee up, you probably know this, but the budget for the state of Arkansas is a little over $6 billion. Okay?
Yeah, I've got a, I've printed it out just so we, I can have it handy for your conversation.
Yeah. Well, you know, and when you get to like, what do they spend money on, right? It's, it's really.
Public education.
Education and, and primary and then even higher, you know, healthcare and prisons. And then there's a lot of other things too, but those three things, if you were to throw in roads and infrastructure, that would be, that would dominate what we spend money on. Everything else is gonna be, well, and state employees is a fairly decent sized number two. So you'll have to vote on things that will be controversial at times, you know? So Governor Sanders, you know, and the legislature passed the Learns Act. What do you think about the Learns Act?
Um, I'm a, I'm a big fan because I'm a small government, parents first, you know? And I do, I, there's, public educators, I had a, a nice lunch with a, a school board member for quite a while who's on the opposite side of Learns from me. And we had, I thought, just a really good discussion. And ultimately, at the end of the day, I always come to parents in the driver's seat. And parents getting to choose, you know, how, how their kids are educated. And I do like that the money can follow the student. There's also some really good things about raising teacher pay. I thought that really needed to happen. I know it's gonna, we're gonna have to look at budgets for the state and make sure that we don't end up in trouble with that. But I do think it's really hard to, if you're gonna do this whole public school thing, it's really hard to get and keep good teachers at $36,000 a year. You can't support a family. You know, and it's not sustainable, especially if they come in with any kind of like college debt or anything, you know? We needed to raise their pay. So I think there's a lot of good things in Learns and I'm a proponent.
It's an interesting concept, the money follows the kid, right? I mean, even though there's nuances, like the cost to educate a child in the state of Arkansas really depends on a whole host of things. So like what it costs, so somebody with disabilities or other things could be totally different. You know, but you know, one of the things I worry about, and I'm just curious if you do, is, is I worry about, you know, sham education for poor kids, you know, you know, where, where, you know, where you do a wonderful job homeschooling, but is there other people that really just take the money and run, so to speak, you know? And I'm not positive about this, but that poor, those poor kids that were like here in Russellville where they, they found these, I don't know. I won't go through this horrible story, but, but, but I worry like, okay, are we gonna have, like, how do we know that there's a standard, right? And, and so, and does the standard matter? Or do you, or what do you think?
Well, I think ultimately it comes back to the question, do I think the government knows better than the American citizen? Like if I, if I think, okay, I'm, you know, if I'm the government, I'm like, listen, I think these Arkansans are too stupid or they're too selfish to educate their own kids. So I'm gonna need to take that money and do it myself. And that's where, to me, yes, there are bad apples. There are bad situations. I was having a discussion with this school board member and he was like, they need to stop judging us as schools on the worst of the school districts. They look at the worst cases of school districts and then they legislate. And I said, okay, but you need to stop making your arguments off of the worst of homeschool parents. You know, the worst examples. We need to, we need to look and see, you know? Ultimately though, that's kind of where it all comes back. We sacrifice our liberty for the sake of security or the government knows best.
You know what? I'm gonna lean into that here in a second because I, I support that view. Uh, cause I.
Yes, is it, is it sometimes, you know, but ultimately, as human beings, parents want the best for their kids. There are some bad parents out there and there are some bad teachers out there. But ultimately I think teachers are good and that they love their students and they want to work well in their classrooms. And I tell my kids when they're in public school, I'm like, you better listen to your teacher and I'll bet, you know, that teacher, you are gonna respect them. But also there are parents who, parents ultimately, mostly, you, most of the parents, you know, love their kids and want the best for them.
Yeah. Well, what's, what's sort of interesting, it's this, like, I just feel there has to be some, I don't know. I don't know where the standard would be. I have to say that I would have also been like some of the people originally, I would have been very negative on homeschooling. But the more that I experienced it with different people, the more I became okay with it. And this, this is even true with boarding school. So I had a partner of mine there in Dardanelle who sent his child off to boarding school. And at first I was like, oh my God, like that's, you know, I had this negative. But once I sort of like leaned into it and understood it, you know, from a different angle, because I would have been a kid that would have flourished if you could have just let me learn all the time. But I'd also say that like, you know, if we want to work on, you know, you know, advanced technology. And even, even this weekend, I was reading some things about Lockheed Martin, the, the, the defense business and their history. And, you know, like, you can't be a dummy to like roll out the next fighter plate or to like come up with radar or anti-radar or missiles or all the things these guys did, you would have to be studly in math, right? It just, and, and so if you don't have a math standard, you know, and you're like, you know, like you're not gonna be, you're not getting to that height, you know? And so, you know, or if you're not, if you're not aiming for it, you're not gonna get there.
But in the same way, you have some homeschool parents that blow those standards out of the water. You've got 16-year-olds like going to MIT, you know, like.
No, no. Well, I, I just mean it in this sense, like you would take a standardized test at some point, you know, like, like the ACT or the SAT. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it homeschool. I'm just saying.
Homeschoolers, a lot of homeschoolers take standardized tests every year. And I believe, and I believe with Learns, it's a requirement.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I'm not being critical homeschool. I'm just saying like, how do you know that they're keeping up? And like you point out, a lot of them have flourished, you know, it's. It's so, I know there's a lot-
Okay, can I make one more statement? The only thing, cause, since, cause we're here and it's not me and you debating, but I'm thinking about all the people at home that might be arguing with me right now.
Of course.
And they're like, these homeschoolers might not be keeping up. And I'm like, how many public kids are not keeping up? It doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that it's a problem with the parent or the teacher. Maybe that child learns differently. Maybe they learn at a different pace. Maybe, maybe like the, the education system as a whole might not be their best thing. You know, like I'm married to somebody who is probably dyslexic, just kind of got through school, but is an amazing carpenter and builder, great with his hands, has a skill that we need that's dying in this world. Um, but school, like, forget it. And for him to read a book, like, kill him, okay? Just, just, he's not gonna, he's just not really gonna do it. But that doesn't mean he's not very valuable in our society and not needed. So, you know, sometimes what's good about the, the Learns Act or school choice in general is you can look at this kid and you can say, what is this kid's spark? What is their natural God given talent and gift? And let me just pour gasoline on that.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, Crystal. I think that, you know, like I was on the, the, the higher education coordinating board for the state. And one of the things that I'm, you know, a little cynical about is, you know, like, uh, you know, like I might argue that like, does everybody need calculus, right? As a freshman in college, right? Probably not. Some people, depending on what you aspire to, you for sure need calculus. But the vast majority, you'd be better off with Spanish. You'd be better off with like accounting. You know, there's just certain things in life, you, or computer programming, or just certain day to day stuff that we do that you might say, oh, I could actually use that skill, whereas I'm never gonna ever use calculus. And I'm not being beating on calculus. Certain people definitely need it to where it where you're going. But like, like, uh, but not everybody. So I, I want to talk about Medicaid for a second. So, you know, uh, not an easy stuff to talk about, right? Uh, you know, a lot of hard decisions. So, um, when I talk to the CEOs of healthcare systems in the state, so, but you know, you know, um, whether it's Baptist or St. Bernard's, you know, all of them, when they look at the big beautiful bill, look at it and just go like, yeah, we're gonna get hurt because if you take people off Medicaid, um, even if there's a justification for it, um, they're still gonna get sick. And when they do, they're gonna roll into-
They go to the ER.
They're gonna go to the ER and those, those, they're gonna, they're gonna eat it, you know? And so you got a view on that.
I know.
It's a difficult problem.
Okay, if I was king of the, if I was king of the world, you know, kind of thing, like what, what would I do first? This is one of those crazy things and you can't do it on a state level, but I wish that the federal government, government would give Medicare completely and Medicaid back to the states. I wish Arkansas had full control to solve Arkansas problems the way Arkansas needs to.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's ultimately the biggest, you know, the biggest thing, because there's so many things that are, oh, sorry, very specific to Arkansas, like, you know? And so, um, I wish we could just get it back to the states and let, let it be closer. I like local, local control.
Well, one of the things that I think that, you know, if, if we say that, hey, look, creating jobs is important, then we need to create environments that people wanna go to. But we probably could just make this simple case that like, hey, people wanna live places that are also, that, that it's besides their, their, you know, their aesthetic beauty, right? Like that, there's some reason you might wanna live in Hawaii, just cause it's Hawaii, right? But, 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 you know, low taxation, it's, it's safe, there's opportunity, there's healthcare. And we could go with a longer list too, right? There's, there's fun stuff to do and things like that, you know? And so one of the things I worry about, you know, is healthcare. 70% of Arkansas, Arkansas counties have primary, primary care physician scarcity, right? And so-
That's huge in my district.
It's huge, right? You know, and so you sit there and go like, okay, in order to create jobs, I'm gonna have to have healthcare and I need a healthcare system that actually works. So, uh, we, we don't have the solution here today for sure, but like, it is definitely an issue, you're right.
It is an issue. And I was just talking to, you know, I was just talking to one of our, well, this past week I talked to two different hospital CEOs in our district and it's, it's really hard. I mean, even, like you said, trying to get doctors that wanna live rurally and, and, you know, come out and live, you know, in a small community and treat. And then, then the hospitals being able to afford them.
You're right, right. There's all this balancing. It's a tough, tough thing. Let me switch gears. So, so, you know, if you were there last year, you'd had to vote on this prison. We do have one of the highest carcerations rates in the planet, because the United States has a higher carceral rate, incarceration rate, and we're one of the highest in the United States, which, which always begs for me, the question is, Arkansas is just that bad, right? That we have to lock everybody up. We also have, you know, um, uh, you know, so we have overcrowding. It's also expensive. So like even for me, I look at it and go like, I only know, I, I, I've never actually been to one of the jails, so I've never seen one. Um, and I only know two people that are in jail. I just, and, and I only know really kind of of them. And for both of them, I look at them and go like, yeah, you know, like, uh, they're in there too long and I don't wanna pay for people that I don't think are super dangerous to sit in jail forever. You know, and so, cause I think it's too expensive, you know, it's super expensive. Although I want violent people in jail. I just, I'm talking about some nonviolent stuff. And my, my particular examples are people that are like, I just go like, oh my God, we could have just fined them instead of like me pay for them or you pay for them. But would you have voted for this prison? And it's kind of dead, so it's easy to, like, I don't know if she's gonna bring it back up next, next session or not, but it's, it may be kind of over. I don't really know. So, but what would you have done?
You know, honestly, it's hard to say because now there's so, there's so much more, you know? I feel like more information. They had the, the hearing, you know, recently. I mean, I call again a hearing, what was that? Where they, the people went and spoke for four, four or five hours.
A public meeting, yeah.
Public meeting. I honestly don't know at the time what I would have done. I, I though, here's where I land on it and I've thought a lot about this. If I were the representative of that district, knowing that my people didn't want it, I would have voted no.
Yeah.
Cause you know, if, if, if my people, I'm ultimately representing my district and if my people didn't want it, I would go no.
Yeah, you know, interestingly, the cost per prisoner or per bed is, is significantly more than the price of a home in, in, in your district, you know, just, just, just as, just a proxy. You know, so you sit there and go like, wait a minute, you know, like, cause it's like over a couple hundred thousand dollars of, uh, you know, uh, I think per, you know, per bed, when you divide it off. Now, it may not be a fair comparison, but it is an interesting comparison.
Yeah.
So, so let, let, let me go to another one that this one passed. Um, so what I wanna use is the Ten Commandments, you know, about what you want. And I, and you've talked a lot about your faith, right? Yeah, that's, that was the, a rough, roughly that was the bill to put it in prominently displayed in schools and in public buildings.
Mm hmm. Um, I would have voted for it because, you know, we hold these truths to be so evident that we were, you know, we had these, our, the government doesn't grant us our rights. God grants us our rights. That's what our country's built on. And the same, you know, God that endowed us with those rights wrote the Ten Commandments. And so I look at it as not even, if you don't wanna look at it as a spiritual document, that's fine. But I think it's a historic one and it's a historic document that really was a part of, foundation of our country. And hanging it on a wall doesn't mean that you're ascribing to a certain religion or that you're forcing that upon people. It's a historic document in that case and I don't have any problems displaying it in school.
So, so let me, let me, we'll just end it on this. Okay, so when you show up at someone's door or you're like in a group or like you're talking, like, what is, how do you like, you know, what's, how do you lay out the pitch? What do you tell people?
I say, you know, I'm Crystal Malloy and I am on city council right now. I live in Dardanelle. I have a business out in the county. I have three kiddos. My oldest just graduated here. The other two are still in school. And so I am all in on this district. I have laid everything on the line and I wanna see the best for us. I'm a problem solver. I wanna work hard. I wanna help bring jobs here. That's one of my biggest things. I am a small business owner. And I know how important it is to try and get business here and to bring business here. And I'm actively doing it every day. And I wanna take that to Little Rock and try and strengthen our district as much as we can, um, to be able to stand on our own two feet, not a government handout. You know, people, you know, if they give me more time, I, one of the things I like to tell people is, I love this district so much and I'm so committed. My husband, so we've been married 20 years and, um, he's a builder and I've watched him build a lot of houses for other people, but I haven't got to get one of my own. And, and, um, this past year, we had the opportunity, we, there was a really old house in downtown Dardanelle that was not savable. And so we ended up tearing it down and building, he built me a house here in downtown Dardanelle. Um, and, uh, in anyways, we were told by loving people. They said, if you build that over the bridge in Russellville, it'll be worth a lot more money, you know? And, and I said, no, we have, if we don't do it, who will? Who will build here? Who will invest here? Who will, you know, we have to set the example and we have to do that. And so I am all in. I'm all in for our district and I really wanna see the best. And I wanna fight for people.